This meeting will be held in person for the Governor's Executive Order 21-97, Masks Must Be Worn. The first item on the agenda is approval of agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Rogalsky.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorello. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, six to zero. For the record, Mr. Demodica is absent tonight. The next item on the agenda is report out of executive session meeting. Executive session meeting, 9:30, 2021. Report out of executive session votes. There were no votes taken. I need a vote to seal the executive session minutes. Motion to seal. Motion to seal by Mrs. Rogalsky. Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, six to zero. The next item on the agenda is comments from the public. If anyone from the public wishes to speak, you can come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and there is a three-minute time limit.
Thank you. Okay. Hello. I'm Carrie Feather, 19 Dory Road. Just a quick note about what I've been seeing go on online recently. Just wrote down a couple of things. Seen and heard some really unfortunate and unnecessary things in the past couple weeks, and specifically, the principal of Cumberland Hill, Deb Malcolm, was just pretty much cyberbullied, to the point of cyberbeing cyberbullied recently this past week. And so, just wanted to lend my support to her. There are facts. Yep? Hello? Better? I'm trying on my tippy toes because I'm really short. Ooh! Wow! Okay. Couple of facts. COVID is real. Masks work. Children are able to talk at lunch when they're not eating. And Deb Malcolm is an extremely caring, capable, extraordinary leader. And I hope that people start to act a lot nicer and maybe get themselves off toxic websites. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Mr. Fiorello.
Hello, Mark Fiorello, 98 Waterman Street. Cumberland, of course. I just wanted to also give my support behind Deb Malcolm and the staff. They are facing unprecedented challenges with the opening of the school, being here in the transitional building, which, as we all know, is not 100% completed and is still not completed. They have been working tirelessly to do everything that they can for the children to not only ensure teaching and learning is happening, but also to protect them from COVID and all that entails. The bullying going on on Facebook is, quite honestly, just absolutely ridiculous. These are nothing more than playground bullies who don't even have the respect of their fellow person to really treat things in a sensible, courteous way. They need to actually stop and think what they say before they say it. What kind of message are we sending to the children that we are supposedly, that we are so concerned about? Also, I would say that if anyone actually has a very real question or concern, instead of posting it on Facebook and creating a stir, why not just email the building administrator or your child's teacher? You will get a real answer. You will get an informed answer, and it will not just be stirring up the angry mob that is in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Any other comments from the public? Okay. The next item on the agenda is discussion under a vote to approve amended policy E2 Transportation. And there were three different policies put into our drive. And after our discussion at last week's meeting, we wanted to quickly reconvene to talk about how we could amend this, to allow the superintendent to have his discretion while we continue to look at other facts of implementing a policy. Mr. Fiorello, is there anything you would like to add?
Yes, there is. The first thing I'd like to make mention of is this problem could have been solved very easily in the last meeting, just by the simple fact that you could have made a motion to restore the walking distances back to what they were in the previous policy, and that would have solved a lot of the issue. And then we could have decided how to move forward with shortening walking distances. That being said, though, I would urge this committee to really try to set a time limit of, even if it's next school year, to set new walking distances. I understand the fiscal constraints. I understand the fiscal restraints in this town very, very much. I also understand that we took buses away from families and from neighborhoods who have not walked to school in probably 10-plus years. And that was due to COVID. And over the summer, I repeatedly asked the question, are we returning the pre-COVID bus routes? And I was assured that we were, when in fact, that was even close to being accurate. We also, due to COVID, increased the walking distance of kindergarten students from one-quarter of a mile to three-quarters of a mile. And that was meant to be a temporary measure to get us through the capacity limitations on the buses that were imposed by the Department of Health. I think we would be doing a disservice to the students if we don't return that, at least to the quarter-mile distance, or even the half-a-mile distance, which was in the budget amendment, I mean, I'm sorry, the policy amendment, the policy draft. So, but at this point, I would take, I'll take any questions if anyone has questions. Mr. Collins?
I think the issue from last week is if we moved, we considered this, moving the walking distance back, at least I was thinking about it. But the problem is, we still don't have accurate head counts on each bus.
Well, we haven't as of today.
We didn't last Thursday.
No, no, I understand that.
So, ex point, we can't, we couldn't have gone back even last week, and what we should have done is, you suggest we couldn't have done because we didn't have the head counts. And I think we're here today to move forward in light of the speeches up here about, you know, the internet and all that other stuff. I mean, we have members on our committee that were liking Facebook posts accusing other members of jeopardizing student safety. So, I just want to add that to the record as well. So, I'd like to, like, not live in the past, and maybe just move forward and let's resolve this issue.
Sure.
And that's what we're here to do right now.
Okay. I would like to say, because there was a lot of talk with the financial considerations, and of course, I considered the financial considerations briefly. But the problem that I found throughout this country is that every transportation policy is not based on safety, it is based on financial restraints. And that is no way to provide health and safety, and I think that we can all agree on that. So, we need to find a path, because a few years ago, we also talked about changing start times, which we all, I think, at least that committee at the time, agreed was absolutely in the best interest of students. But because we never set any kind of a deadline or any kind of a target date, that work never happened. We never looked for the money to add the buses that were going to be necessary for that. And my concern is that if we don't actually have a deadline in place, this will never happen. And quite honestly, having these kids walk these distances is just ridiculous. So, it's up to the committee.
Ms. Smith? Thank you. And to your point, Mr. Fiorello, I would agree. We need to change the walking distances, but there's several layers of hindrance to it, and I think this is where we couldn't take it forward last time. We all agree that the additional wording for the superintendent is very important because not all these buses are completely full, and to add a few more at bus stops, that is what he can do. So, if that child is at the 1.8 or 1.9 mark on a two-mile walk, it gives him the opportunity to say, yes, that bus stop is right near you, and yes, we can put you on it. And I think it's very important for the public to understand, that has already been started. The superintendent has worked with a lot of parents, and his transportation coordinator has worked, have worked with a lot of parents to do that. So, I do think that we really should support that change so that work can continue. As for the finance and other things that were said, I believe that we need to get all the financial information. We need to understand how many children, how many buses, what are those costs. But it's important for the public to understand as well that those buses aren't available to us right now. And we knew going into the policy that we wouldn't have buses available because of the shortage with drivers throughout the nation and in our area. We were very lucky that Cumberland had enough drivers for the buses that we had. The training that takes place to hire these drivers and get their proper licensing and things like that, I believe the Durham representative said a few meetings back, takes months. So, the earliest we were going to be even looking at being able to shorten these distances and add buses, if the money was available, wasn't going to be until next year and potentially next school year. So, we're not giving up. I don't think anybody here is giving up on that. We're trying to give the approvals necessary today for the superintendent to step in how he deems fit so that we can address these concerns that are being brought in while we look to Durham, look to find out how many buses we're looking at, what those costs are going to be. And that's going to help us to delve down into the finances. It's futile at this time to say it's going to cost us a half a million dollars if the research wasn't done. So, I just want to keep that in mind and fully support the change to get the superintendent the necessary approvals that he needs.
I'm curious, though, about one thing. We had this whole discussion about the financing of it and the availability of buses and the availability of drivers. And one of the driving factors of not worrying, I don't want to say not worrying about the fiscal impact, but as far as a fiscal note or anything like that, was specifically because we knew we'd have no drivers. If we were lucky, we'd get, we'd be able to add one bus before winter break. And everybody, that policy passed three to zero in policy. So, I'm curious what changed between the policy meeting and the regular meeting.
I asked questions at that policy meeting, and I was the negative vote when it came before the entire school committee. I asked questions about financing and the funding and how that was going to happen and what work was done to that. And I was told at that time that it was already being researched where the funds would come from, that they knew that it was going to be six to seven new buses and the approximate half a million dollars. When we came into that public meeting, Mr. Prignano stood and said, we don't know where those funds are going to be coming from. We're going to need to ask the mayor. At that point, I knew we had to vote against it, that we just did not put enough.
That's actually not true, though. We never discussed that there was funding in place or anybody was looking for it.
Yes, we did.
In policy?
Yes. And this is probably where we probably need to.
Let's take this in order.
Yeah.
No, that's not true. Because I specifically, it's said at the time.
One at a time, please. One at a time.
So, that is my reasoning on why. I didn't want to just sit and have it be pushed back onto the mayor and onto the town when we don't even have information sitting in front of us.
Mrs. Feather?
I would just like to say that I do have the policy minutes in front of me, and there is not anything about that, anything about what Ms. Smith just said, in the policy minutes. My recollection as being the other member of the policy committee and the person that Mr. Collins was just staring at while making that comment about Facebook posts, I am the person that was at that meeting, and I am the person that heard exactly everything that was said as well. And I take copious notes. I was just actually taking notes for this meeting. I've now stopped. What was said was that we were done thinking about finances first in front of student safety. That is, the exact wording, I think, that Mr. Fiorello used during the policy meeting was that we were done putting finances before the best interests of the students. We did not talk about the financing at the policy meeting.
Mr. Dr. Thornton?
Sorry, Mr. Thornton. Thanks, ma'am. Just a few thoughts. First, in policy sub, I know we did say if we want Durham to look at this, it has to go to, like, their scheduling center, and it's a many-months process. I believe at that meeting, I was with Mr. Chandler, and we did, throughout a rough, rough number, I said, it could be seven buses, you know, could be more. But seven buses, $70,000 a bus, Mr. Prignano, you know, half a million, give or take, could be more, could be double, we just don't know. But in terms of tonight, I know you may not find agreement on the big picture as walking zones, but if you did give me the ability in option C to assist people, we do have the walking, I'm sorry, the actuals in your packet tonight, and you can see there is some room, I can help people. I believe that's option C. And if you did do that and assigned us the task of working with Durham to, you know, operationalize the zones, if you pass those zones, we could come back to you. But we did talk to Durham on our Wednesday call, and they did say it would have to go probably to their, their main office. And I'm not sure how many months, it would take a few months minimum to model it. But yes, certainly, option C, if you could, at the end of your discussion, give me the ability to help folks. We have a list we've already created of people we can help, and I think if we're good out that we can assist more, I'll probably get more people. And seeing the bus loads yesterday, we do have some ability to help people. So, I'd be really happy to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Mr. Collins?
Question from Ms. Feather or Mr. Fiorello. Do either one of you think any member of this committee does not care about student safety? Just a yes or no?
I can answer that. No, I'm not going to give you just a yes or no, because that's not the intent, and you know that's not the intent of what we were saying.
I don't know that.
No. What I said was, I want, you know, I went back and rewatched last week's meeting a couple of times because I was saying to myself, gosh, I can't believe that Mr. Collins would think that I was saying that, you know, he doesn't care about student safety, and why did he take that so personally? You took that personally. That was not.
You said it, not me. You said it, you got to stand on what you said.
Would you please go, I would love for you to go back and rewatch that meeting and see.
I did.
Okay? I'm sorry. All I know is that there are kids who are going to be, I mean, there are kids who are going to be endangered by walking these distances. Plain and simple. We had, as Mr. Fiorello said, we had done things as a stopgap measure during COVID. And now, we are not, we are not, we're going back on our word and not helping the students. I understand. We're not going to pass this policy. It's never going to pass at this point. I understand that, because now there are emotions involved, and not from me.
No, to me, it's fact, and it sounds like this fear mongering. Mr. Fiorello?
Excuse me? What was that? I didn't hear what you said.
No, I just, it's a simple question.
No, no, I didn't hear what you said to me a minute ago.
I'm not sure that this conversation is really productive.
Nope, it's not.
What we need to do in moving forward.
I'm going to take a point of personal privilege, though, and answer the question.
In actually helping the students right now that could be helped.
Well, I'm going to answer the question.
We do need to move forward. Okay, Mr. Fiorello?
No, and I don't want anyone to believe that I don't think that you're interested in student safety, because I absolutely believe that you are. All I'm saying is, I don't think the policy should be based on finances. We need to set a goal. We need to set a target date, because otherwise, it'll never happen. And I think it's something that we could all stand behind. So, we need to figure out how we're going to get there and actually have a date that we need to have this happen.
In the way you articulated that, I can get behind that 100%.
Good. Let's set a date, then, to set the original policy for September, for the start of school, and try to add buses as we can.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, because I think it's really important, maybe for some school committee members, maybe for the public. The policy that was changed during COVID was one specific change, and that was to the kindergarten walking distances, to make them equal to all the other kids in the school. That is not what we're talking about, I believe, when you're saying what you're doing, that we have to get back to what it used to be. Because what it used to be before COVID was just that kindergarten change. The difference, right, the difference being that because of the cutback last year, and while we were not on committee, I did watch all of those school committee meetings, I did attend online during all of COVID. It was brought to the attention at that time that more students were being picked up that did not fall into the distance of the policy. So, the not following a policy was the issue. And it's not that we have to get back to it, because that's not following the policy. So, wherever that blame is, it's in the past. We are following policy now. And Dr. Thornton has spent a tremendous amount of time working with the police, working with his transportation coordinator, working with Durham, to get those exceptions and address all the parents' notes that are coming in. So, it's not a case that we need to go back to what it used to be, because it was only one change that was made, and that what it used to be. And that is not going to impact to the level that we're talking about of six to seven new buses because of kindergarten students.
What I'd like to say is, it is not in the past, because you have families that have never walked for very simple reasons. Because it was deemed over the past 10 years in dribs and drabs, and superintendents are the ones that made that decision that the walking distances for certain neighborhoods were not safe, and they were, had buses added to them. The policy had never been changed. But let's talk about the Miller's Brook area for Garvin. They lost all their busing. They were going to be expected to walk down Heinz Road. And somehow, the police thought that was okay. But the problem is, is that the police don't actually check walking distances. That's a misconception. All they really do is they look at what the bus stops are and determine whether a certain bus stop is safe for where it's located. So, what's happened over the years is that the superintendents, Dr. Thornton, Mr. Mitchell, whoever was in the position at the time, listened to parents' complaints and concerns, went, looked at it, and said, you know what? These are not safe areas. We need to get these kids on a bus. And that is why. It's not like, and there's been some misconception that Durham just willy-nilly added buses to our routes. That is not true. The superintendent, the school department, added those buses. And when I asked if we were going back to those routes, I was told yes, and that was not true. So, to say that it's based on these walking distances is really kind of not applicable because all these families lost their busing, and they only found out a couple of weeks before. That's why I ended up writing the policy the way I did, to bring those back into line where they mostly were. And the kindergarten distance was only raised to three-quarters of a mile for COVID. It was meant to be a temporary measure, and it is now ensconced in this policy, and I think we owe it to move that back. I mean, you have, it's a school like BF Norton, who had four or five buses, I can't remember, now have two buses. That doesn't, that's not fair.
I think, I think we can all agree that we want to figure out a way to work together to be able to amend a policy that will be focused on student safety while also understanding the financial implications of it and the choices that that gives us or that we have to make as a result. The discussion last week was, in the absence of the financial data or the impact, it was hard for some members to approve a policy, not knowing what that long-term impact would be. That is simply factual information. It's not an indication of whether we think the policy is a good policy or a bad policy. It's, we have a fiscal responsibility as well. And it's not saying that we think the fiscal is more important than the student, but we have to understand what that is. So, we said we would go away and better understand that. So, but in the meantime, what we can do tonight is give the superintendent the authority to do all those things that we have said. So, there are two, there are three policies in our drive right now. There's a version A, which was the one that was presented last week. There's a version B that has the superintendent language in it, as well as additional behavior language for on the, being on the bus and at the bus stop. And there's version C that has just the superintendent language in it and doesn't have the other additional behavior language. Version B and version C do not have changes in the walking distances. They have the superintendent discretion. So, what's, what's before us tonight is to take a vote on, on the policy that we want to put into effect immediately.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Fiorello.
Going back and taking away all the added changes of language, I think, would be kind of senseless. If there's not the desire to change any of the walking distances, then I would make a motion to approve version B. And we need to promise this community that we are going to work on this problem.
So, we have a motion. Yes, Mr. Collins?
I, the issue is, and I talked to a couple of members of the community about this.
Is this a second for discussion, actually? He's made a motion.
I beg your pardon. Second for discussion.
Okay, just wanted.
So, they're kind of, so there's a bit of a variation with C and B, and in my reading it, very, version C is that there will be some superintendent authority over kind of adjusting. Now, I talked to a couple of members of the community, one minute, one minute in particular, and she brought up a good point. So, that we've identified a couple of spots in town, particularly Marshall Ave. That's one spot. So, that's, yeah, so that can be adjusted, but there might be other ones, as, you know, this gains some momentum, where we may have to adjust certain walking distances. Now, it's not fair. I understand that. It's not fair to all people. Well, I think we use the term equity a little too loosely, but it's not, it's not fair, is what I'll say to some people. Like anything else we do up here, there are going to be some people that are going to be inconvenienced, and it's not going to be fair. Okay? But I think, under the current situation with pressing safety issues that the superintendent identifies, because we can clearly disagree over what's safe and what's not safe, but the superintendent has that authority, and I'm willing to give him the flexibility to identify those spots, and he'll obviously let us know in that situation. But back with COVID, we had an emergency situation, we didn't know our busing situation. I would argue that we're still in that situation because whether people agree with what's going on or not, there are more parents dropping kids off, there are now, maybe, there's maybe more kids on the bus now, but it's on a case-by-case basis where those needs are. In this committee, I don't think us six, seven collectively are in a position to make the decisions. It would be like seven members of a football team debating in the huddle on every play. I think the superintendent has to make these decisions and make these calls, and that's what he's entrusted with doing. And I think I'd be comfortable passing version C. But down the road, I think we clearly need to fix these walking.
B.
I'm, I'm sorry?
Version B and version C both have the superintendent language in it.
Yeah.
But version B, which is what Mr. Fiorello made a motion about, includes the behavior on the bus language.
In the bus stop.
And at the bus stop. So, version B includes the superintendent language and behavior.
Okay, yeah, fair enough, then. All right.
So, Mr. Fiorello has made a motion to approve version B. Mr. Collins has seconded that. Any other comments? Ms. Smith?
The part of B that I could not support is that we've taken out the wording about if it's deemed safe, routes that are deemed safe. And I think that it's important that we keep that wording in there, and the reason being is, perfect example, Marshall Avenue. Myself, Dr. Thornton, the police said, no, it is a walkable road. We had to get in touch with the chief to say, there are no sidewalks, and there are gullies from the water runoff on the road. And he said, no, that is not a safe road. We have to have busing on Marshall Avenue, and we were able to get busing for students that were there, for Garvin at least, that was the only one that I was involved with. But taking that wording out, I think it's vital to keep that wording in there. And the second thing is, I don't want to remove that the committee has to approve within 30 days, and the reason being is, we've already seen it. We're under contract with the bus company, and we have very specific guidelines that we have to follow, maybe perhaps getting information to them on our anticipated numbers for next year by June, and then they have to come out and put out their plans and everything. If we take away our, our right to look at that information and not put a time and date around it, we're going to have exactly what we're seeing already this year. Even though it's policy, we have to keep asking for the information. We're not getting the information pushed to us with all those bus routes and all that specific information. We're pulling every single meeting, asking questions. So, when it comes to policy B, I do like it. It gives the authority. It gives the clear guidance of what's expected on buses and at buses. But it took away a few focal points that I think are important to keep for our school committee.
Mr. Fiorello, and then Mrs. Rogalsky.
I agree with her sentiment. However, I think that, under the guidelines where the given walking distance is deemed safe, I think the sentence, students may be expected to walk the following distances, kind of covers that. But if you want to put that back in, just so it's in there, I have no problem with that. The other part about the bus routes being approved, year after year, we've done this, we've never, I don't think we've ever done it on time, because, you know, things are in flux at the beginning, we're changing routes, and then what happens is, we, sorry, we, we approve the routes, and then a lot of times. we approve the routes, and then, a lot of times, within the next couple of weeks, they change again. We're just, we can always have access to those routes. We trust that the superintendent and his transportation person will do that. This is one of the reasons I've always pushed for a transportation director. But again, I don't really care, to be honest with you, about approving the bus routes, but if you want to keep that in, that's up to the pleasure of the committee.
I'd like to change it, then, and if we keep it in, and we put up a proposal to change B, to put that sentence back in there about the deemed routes.
Okay, so, so hold on. We have a motion already on the table, and a second for discussion, so we're going to finish this piece out first. Mrs. Rogalsky?
I just want to clarify, because I'm looking at version B, and that the committee annually approves simply got moved to the next paragraph. It's still in there. It's very, very slightly, but it is still in there, so I'm, I'm, yeah, okay. I fully agree that there does need to be a timetable. I can stand behind version B, I have no problem. I think it would be a shame to get rid of all of the behavioral language that you worked so hard on, like, that makes no sense to me to get rid of that. So I fully support version B, and I also fully support the idea of having a, an end date, you know, having a target goal date, because we, we all know that it needs to be done, so, and I agree that if we don't set a goal, it'll just keep getting pushed off. So I just wanted to voice my support for that.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Rogalsky. Mr. Fiorello?
What I would suggest, then, is we pass the policy with, we pass B, and I'll let the committee decide about, you know, the walking distances being safe and all that. But then, once we get the information from fiscal, and I'll leave it to Mr. Collins as the current chair, to get that work done, then we'll go back into policy with fiscal in mind, and we'll set deadlines or whatever, that we think we can make work.
So if we were to, if, so right now, we have a motion and a second for the existing version B with no changes to it. We would have to take that vote first. No, we can-
So, I heard Ms. Smith suggest that she may want to amend it to remove, to not remove, as currently proposed, the language, quote, "Given the walking route is deemed safe," that she would, and I'm not, this is not an advocacy piece. I don't live here. It's just, it's not about me. But, so if that were to happen, if that, she could make that motion, if it were seconded, and there could be discussion or none, you vote on the amendment, then you vote on the version B as amended. So a motion would need to be made along the lines of what I said and seconded, if that was the committee's pleasure.
He's saying she could make an amended, and then we'll go back and vote on the original one and not, yeah.
Like you said in, like, the earlier-
Okay. So Ms. Smith, do you have something to say?
Yes, thank you, sir. I would like to amend policy B, the version B, to put the wording back in that says, "Given the walking route is deemed safe," under guidelines. In addition to that, I'd like to amend the 30 days to 45 days, so that it covers those additional days and times that Mr. Fiorello had brought up.
Okay, so Ms. Smith has made a motion to amend version B with those two, two changes, 45 days and the walking distance is deemed safe. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
A second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, six to zero. Now, we previously had a motion to approve version B without any of the amended language, and that was seconded, so we need to vote on that.
But now it's as amended.
As amended.
Now it's as amended. Okay, we vote, okay. So now, we're voting again on amended.
I'll make a motion to approve option B as amended.
You just need to vote. Because now you are automatically-
Already in motion.
Just want to remind people I was here.
Okay, so, so, all in favor of the amended version B?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve resolutions, and I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Collins.
All right. Thank you for joining us. We have five resolutions this evening, less than the 22 we anticipated a week ago, thankfully. So first up, we have SCPR-09-2021-69, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve the following change orders at the CHS Transitional Building swing space in the amount of $18,579.22, HV Collins, and I have them itemized, and I will read these. Change orders have occurred at the high school swing space necessary to keep the project on schedule. First off, we have a reroute of drain pipes in rooms 202 and 203 for a total of $2,529.95. We have a relocate firearm enunciator to facilitate storefront removal for $2,574.46. We have fabricate and install additional ductwork through room 200 for $1,413.86. Relocate plug mold, rooms 303, to avoid conflict with new exhaust, $1,854.23. Framing modifications to accommodate new storefront, $1,599.33. Abatement where four existing valves were replaced, $8,607.39, again, for a total of $18,579.22, HV Collins, and this shall be coming out of the $79 million bond. Mr. Burton, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Prignano?
Actually, I do have a question. Okay.
I just want to confirm, I just want to confirm that this has been approved by the building committee?
Yes, on Monday evening, it was approved by the building committee.
Thank you.
And these are all being funded through the bond?
They are, funded by the bond, according to the resolution. So if there are no questions, I would move passage.
Okay, Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-09-2021-69. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorello. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, six to zero.
Next, we have SCPR-09-2021-70, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve the following change orders at J.J.M. Cumberland Hill Elementary School in the amount of $42,892.41, HV Collins, itemized as structural engineer, to redesign framing due to material delays, $5,355.53. Abatement of additional 2,500 square feet of ceiling tiles in seven rooms, $23,505.40. And abatement and removal of 14 whiteboards from six classrooms for $14,031.48, again, for a total of $42,892.41. This is coming out of the $79 million bond, and this did pass the building committee on Monday night? Yes?
Yes.
Are there any questions?
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, the abatement and removal of the 14 whiteboards, the abatement is due to asbestos, or?
Yeah, I can answer that, Alex.
Thank you.
We say whiteboards, they're actually chalkboards.
Right.
And they were painted over, and the adhesive that was stabilizing the boards to the walls were, had asbestos to it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
The most amazing thing I've learned during this whole process is, the glue has asbestos.
Fascinating. Any males have any questions? If there's no questions, I would move passage of SCPR-09-2021-70.
Okay, Mr. Collins makes a motion to pass SCPR-09-2021-70. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, six to zero.
Next, we have SCPR-09-2021-71, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve the following invoices for payment to Emory Environmental Associates for services at both J.J.M. Cumberland Hill Elementary School and the CHS Transitional Building swing space in the amount of $29,670, and, I'm sorry, $90, in the following invoices. I don't have it queued up, I'm sorry. I should read that for the record. I'm sorry, can I just get them? I didn't print them up. We have invoices, and these are in the drive. So these are in the drive, I thought they were going to be itemized invoices. These are just a series, all to Emory Environmental Associates. Are there any questions? If there's no questions, I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-09-2021-71. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogalsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, six to zero.
Next, we have a resolution empowering, authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve payment to Toronto Architects of Providence, Rhode Island for architectural and engineering services for the CHS Transitional Building renovations in an amount not to exceed $117,758.84. Including this payment, Toronto has been paid 80% of the $209,363.53 total fee, and again, this is coming out of the $79 million bond. Any questions?
No.
If there are none, I would move passage of SCPR-09-2021-72.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-09-2021-72. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith and Mrs. Rogalsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, six to zero.
And finally, we have SCPR-09-2021-73, a resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve payment to Toronto Architects of Providence, Rhode Island for architectural and engineering services for the J.J.M. Cumberland Hill Elementary School renovations in an amount not to exceed $217,784.62. Including this payment, Toronto has been paid 80% of the $519,829.10 total fee, and this is also coming out of the $79 million bond. Are there any questions?
No.
If there are none, I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-09-2021-73. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogalsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, six to zero. Next, thank you, Mr. Collins. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion over.
Motion by Mrs. Feather?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogalsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.